Please join us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Okay, we have a shout out from our city attorney.
Mayor and council, council did meet in closed session concerning real property negotiations and provided direction to the city manager and the city attorney concerning the matter. I'm sorry, the housing authority met in closed session, not the city council, and gave direction to the executive director and general counsel concerning that matter.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, adoption of the agenda, any deletions, additions, changes? I have one addition. Anybody else?
Close in memory?
Did you want to close in memory of Pete Mizetti?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that. We'll close in memory of Pete Mizetti, longtime Brisbane resident. Lived on Mendocino Street, grew up here. Town was one of the city founder, I mean, his family was one of the city founders. Way back, way back when, 100 years ago. Okay, under mayor council matters, I'd like to, under written communications, instead of that being item D, make item D discussion of adding an, discussion of an ad hoc committee to study the feasibility of becoming a charter city, and then move item E to written communications. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an operating agenda for tonight. First up is oral communications, number one. This is for any item that is not on the agenda. I don't have any slips. That's amazing. Okay, moving on. Next up is introductions, item A, introduction of new public work staff. We have Adrian Ethererton, Sustainability Management Analyst, Amy Listman, CERT Program Assistant, and Alan Sandoval, Parks Facilities Maintenance Worker. I guess Alan's not here tonight, or?
Well, we're gonna do all of them, why don't you all come on up?
Okay, we do them all at once, okay, and then, let's see, we also have new community development staff, Alberto Viana, Community Development Technician, Sherilyn Walker, Administrative Assistant, and introduction of a new police department staff, Robert Bobby McCarthy. Another Bobby, another Robert, wow. We got, we got Robert, we got Robert, we got Bobby, Robbie, Robert, and Bob.
Oh my goodness.
We got the Bobs coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you a number of new city employees. I would like to say first that you were just mentioning Pete Mizetti. Pete Mizetti was actually a long-term public works employee with the City of Brisbane and retired from the City of Brisbane some number of years ago. So, you've mentioned the names, but I'm gonna go back through that. The first, to my right, is Adrian Ethererton. Adrian is our Sustainability Management Analyst. She is a graduate of the University of Illinois, studied industrial engineering, previously worked as Executive Director of Sustainable San Mateo County, currently is appointed to the Half Moon Bay Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Leadership Advisory Board. And Adrian is working with public work staff and is staffed to the Open Space and Ecology Committee and the Complete Streets Committee.
Great, welcome Adrian.
Next to Adrian is Amy Listman. Amy is our CERT Coordinator. She attended California State University in Fresno, where she studied microbiology. She previously worked as a volunteer in emergency management with the City of Pacifica. She's been in the police department, or the city police departments, excuse me, let me say that one more time. Previously worked as a volunteer in emergency management with the City of Pacifica's Police Department and with Genetech as a Quality Assurance Investigator, and with the California Department of Parks and Recreation as a law enforcement dispatch clerk. She volunteers for Terranova Athletics Boosters as Board Secretary. Next is Alberto Viana. Alberto is a Community Development Technician. Alberto attended Cappuccino High School, City College of San Francisco, and College of Marin, where he studied computer information technology and computer science. He previously worked as an administrative aide and a permit technician for the City of Sausalito. Next to Alberto is Sherilyn Walker.
Welcome Alberto.
Sherilyn is Administrative Assistant in the Community Development Department. Started, I think, in December, took over some big shoes, everybody in the community knew Trish, and this is the new Trish.
Welcome Sherilyn.
She attended University of California, Los Angeles, UCLA, and despite that, we hired her anyway. And Antioch University, where she studied English and writing. She previously worked at the University of San Francisco as an administrative director. She worked at the University of California, Berkeley, as an administrative assistant, apparently to atone for her undergraduate sins, but, and for the Santa Monica Police Department as a records technician. And then finally, Robert Bobby McCarthy, police officer. Bobby attended Sarah High School and Jutson University in Chicago on a basketball scholarship. He has a degree in business administration and has previously worked as a basketball coach at the high school and college level. I want to introduce all these folks to you. We're very glad to have them onboard. A lot of new, fresh blood in the organization, and we appreciate the contributions that they've made already and that they're gonna make going into the future.
Welcome Bobby, and welcome to all of you, actually, you know, just so that folks know too that we're not going on a hiring craze, there's a lot of people that retired, and so, a lot of folks here, we're fortunate to find some really, really dynamic replacements, and we're very fortunate in that effort. So, welcome aboard.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you Clay. Okay, next, next thing we have up is presentation. Camille Salmon has been good enough to join us tonight, and this is gonna be with the San Francisco Arch Education and also Brisbane Dance Workshop. Camille, hello.
Hello, good evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Conway for inviting me this evening, and to thank the council for letting me speak before you. Most of you know me in the hat that I wear as Brisbane Dance Workshop Founder and Artistic Director. To that goal, we have always wanted to make sure, one of our missions is to be able to provide our students with as many outside possibilities for their growth as artists and young performers as possible. I wear another hat, which is my working hat, my daily existence working hat, and that is, I am Program Director for a nonprofit in San Francisco called San Francisco Arts Education Project, known as SF Arts Ed. Among the things we do besides placing professional artists in public schools in visual and performing arts, we run summer camps, we have a gallery out at Minnesota Street and Dog Patch where we show student work, offer workshops, and we have a very special program, which is out of school, called the SF Arts Ed Players. We've been doing this for 17 years. And for 17 years, we've made connections with Brisbane Dance Workshop for those students who are really eager and want to do this. This is an invitation-only group of students. They're about 50, am I right with that? This year, we have six from Brisbane who will be performing in a full-fledged musical, Seussical. We're very excited, and I wanted to honor those students. We have, they're all BDW students, this is such a, it's such a great evening, because tonight we're gonna be honoring all these wonderful students and children of Brisbane. This is a very wonderful jewel of a place. And performing in the next, starting February 10th, thank you for putting that up there. We have David Levelette, who will be performing, B Shirazi, Lafi O Tassi Maou, did I pronounce that right?
Falto Asse Maou.
Thank you so much. And her younger, wonderful, talented sister Kalani, as well as Julian Ennis and Alisa Boucher. These students have been performing for about 10 hours, I mean, rehearsing for about 10 hours a week since September, and they're ready to go up. They have been studying with some of the most wonderful professional artists in vocal, dance, and theater on Saturdays for six and seven hours. They're in Hell Week this week, is what we call it. They're at rehearsal, they're in the theater, they're getting it all together, so they couldn't be here this evening, but I'd like to let you know, this is an amazing show, and I hope that you can go and enjoy and really celebrate and see those children on stage. Lafi plays a major role, David played a major role in the one last season. They're all wonderful, and you'd be so proud of them. And, you know, I say this as I look at someone whose daughters have also gone through BDW and also have wonderful careers in front of them as well. So I want to thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I just want to celebrate, like we're celebrating all these children, all our wonderful children here in town. You can get tickets at city box office, it's easy, and you'll love it. It's a Gateway Theater, it's a beautiful little theater. Thank you. And excuse me for leaving early, but I'm meeting the BDW Theatrical Director tonight to cast the BDW May Show, so that's where I'm going. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Camille.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Camille or anything?
You know, Clark, I have some questions. So I thought you said that the show was sold out. Is there still some tickets left?
Yeah, yeah, there's tickets left.
All right, good, because...
There are very few tickets.
Yeah.
But there are tickets, yes, get on it. There are very few tickets.
There are tickets, yeah.
I know for a fact the Sunday, the 15th, I think 1:00 PM show is sold out. There might be one or two, but that's it.
Awesome.
All right, thanks Camille.
Okay, thank you, Camille. Okay, next up, we have, we're gonna present some accommodations to members of the Brisbane Strikers, AYSO Under 12 Boys Soccer Team, this is 2017 Section Two champs. And their coach Hugo Gomez is gonna come up and say a few words about these championship kids. Got all these great medals, man, gonna have a sore neck wearing over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to introduce these boys and just let you guys know how much of an amazing year these boys had. Not only did they go undefeated, they allowed very few goals, even though we had the mercy rule against us going on, it's very hard to defend against a team that knows we can't score against them, and these guys still didn't allow any goals. They were just an amazing, amazing team. They made it to the area, they won the area. We got to sectionals, and they were just a very hard-to-beat team. They did not want to lose, and they played basically 12 games during three weekends.
Wow.
Along with basketball games and whatever other activities and school. And we faced Hillsboro in a very intense, intense final, that went to penalties at the end.
My gosh.
Penalty shootout, winning goal over there, yeah, but it was really great, great, great group of kids. Besides being great athletes, the way they won, I think most of the teams that we beat were rooting for us. So to have a team that is rooting for you after you beat them is impressive. So, great, great, great bunch of kids.
All right, well, thank you Coach Hugo. I'm gonna come down and give you guys some accommodations here. That's amazing, no goals, man, defense, huh? All right, that's what wins championships, any sport. Okay, first up, I got Jack Adam. Congratulations, Jack. All right, Javier Chavez. Congratulations Javier. Kevin Cole. Congratulations Kevin. Mateo Corona. Congratulations Mateo. Strong handshake, wow. David Gomez. Omar Gomez. Nolan Ibarra. All right Nolan. Cyrus Macedis. Congratulations Cyrus, all right. Reese Secchiere. And last but not least, Sebastian Sutton. Come on over guys, let's take a photo. I could stand behind you, I'm tall enough.
My face is sexy. Get off quickly out of this photo.
Come on back here, you're taller.
Opera see.
Here you go. All right. Say winners.
Winners.
Champions.
Champions.
No goals.
No goals.
Defense.
Defense.
Got it, all right.
I just, I'm sorry, I just want to add, they're still going for the Western State Championship in Bakersfield, March, so it still keeps going, they still get to play some more.
Congratulations.
All right, congrats guys, very good. Okay, the fun stuff is over, now we gotta get down to business. Thank you guys, yeah. Have a good night.
What do you mean you're not staying? What do you mean you're not staying?
Get some good sleep. See you later Ernie.
See you later, have fun in Bakersfield.
I love that one. Bye there. Bye babe.
Is it?
Too funny.
Ah, it'd be excellent.
Okay, that brings us to the consent calendar, is anything, anybody wants to remove? Let's see, we got...
I'd make a motion to approve items A through J?
Second.
A through J, okay, and we have a motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and let me just read off what those are, just so that people know. Item A, approval of city council minutes, November 21st. B is council minutes, November 30th. C, council minutes, December 14th. D, adopt ordinance 624. This is the second reading of zoning text and map amendments to housing overlay zones, PA Oz 1 and PA Oz 2, to implement the Parkside Brisbane Village Precise Plan. Item E, accept and appropriate the Emergency, Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grant Order to North County Fire and authorize the purchase of firefighter self-contained breathing apparatus, or SCUBA. Item F, approve funding agreement with the city and county Association of Governments of San Mateo for safe routes to school and green structure pilot program. And item G, H, and I, and J are investment, monthly investment reports for April, May, June, and July respectively. Okay. All right, so that brings us to a public hearing, which is item A, consider adoption of Resolution 2018-05 to implement the drought reserve rate for the utility fund. And staff report please.
Yes. This is an item that has come before you previously on November 2nd, 2017. The goal of this is to ensure the utility fund has adequate funding to provide safe drinking water and to provide sewer service for everybody. During the drought, we were down about $400,000 in revenues as people used less water, mostly from the landscape meters, landscape users. We charged the highest amount per use, because we're trying to encourage them to use less, but when they're using zero, it really brought our revenues down. So there's two ways to deal with droughts. One is you can create a drought reserve, so that way you can continue to provide the functions that you need to ahead of time, or you could raise rates during the drought. Raising rates during the drought, and we brought this to the Infrastructure Subcommittee, but raising rates during a drought seems counterintuitive. As we're asking people to use less, we're charging them more for what they're not using in order to get the same amount of money. You know, inherently, I think the Subcommittee, as well as staff, thought that did not seem fair. So a different way to do it is to create a reserve within the system, so as you have droughts, you have enough cash on hand to weather through those droughts. As I said, we lost about $106,000 during the last drought, so the thought was, over a four-year period, or we lost $424,000 during the drought, the idea was over a four-year period to have enough to cover one year of a drought. The last drought was a two-year period, so we probably will keep this in place for a while to build up our reserves. So our goal is to raise about $106,000 a year. The Subcommittee looked at it and said, probably 50% of that money should be coming from the landscape users and 50% from all the other users, and the reason being is that it's the landscape users that have the biggest impact on us during a drought, which is another reason why you don't want to raise rates during the drought, because the landscape users are not using any water, so therefore, they're not adding any money back into the system while they're not using it. So it seems really, then you're really just impacting the users who absolutely need to use on a daily basis. So what the Subcommittee looked at was saying, with 50% of the revenues coming from the landscape meters, the cost per year would be $612.81 for the year, which would be about $102 for each billing period for landscape meters. For residential and commercial users, what the Subcommittee suggested was that those who use less than the median amount of water, which is 12 units per billing period, should pay less than those who use more. So what, the formula that we looked at was charging the people who use less than the median, $13.91 a year, which is $2.32 a billing period, and those that use more than the median, $41.91 a year, which is $6.99 a billing period. So overall, it's not very, it's not gonna be a very large increase for people during, while we're building up the reserve. We did receive, as I said in the staff report, we received five phone calls and one email, but we did not receive any letters. Mostly, the people who called were asking what is their impact on them personally, and when we told them, it was either $2 or $6 for billing period, that seems very satisfactory. And then we did receive one question as to why we did not raise rates during the drought, and I already gave that explanation as to what I told that person. So therefore, we have not received 50% protest, so the decision is on city council as to what you want to do. If we had received 50% of the users in protest, then the city council would not be able to raise the rates, but without receiving that 50%, we can. If you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer them.
Council questions.
Yeah, you know, I just want to comment, I just want to thank the Subcommittee for doing a really good job, I mean, working with staff, and what you put forth is prudent and it's fair, and, yeah, just great job. Thank you.
Stuart, I did have one inquiry from a citizen who said, they wanted to know, and they're not protesting anything, rates or anything like that, instead, they get the bill, it's kind of frustrating, because it's got all these things that are broken out, you know, and like, you know, the bond issue, and, you know, the line fee and all that, and why can't we just roll it all into one? And...
We could, the thought from previously was that by showing it split out, people would be, would have a better understanding of what was in their bill, and they'd have a better understanding of what the cost of the water was, what the cost of the sewer, each unit of sewer that they use, and trying not to hide what we're doing, trying to be as transparent as we can. Because the concern is, you start rolling everything into one, and you start saying, I'm paying $500 or $300 per billing period, and then you don't really know what you're buying for that amount of money. So, we could do it either way, the system is flexible enough, but as, you know, in the past, we've just thought that probably providing more transparency as to what the charges are for, it would be better for residents. If they want it the other way, we're more than happy to accommodate that. We can't just accommodate it individually.
Yeah, this is one individual, and it seemed to be a pet peeve for them, you know, that they found it, you know, cumbersome, you know, on going through the bill that way.
I understand, but we, I mean, I know on the bill, we do have in a box what you owe for that billing period.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they could just pay attention to that one line item if they would like.
Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak on this matter, a public hearing is now open, and welcome to come on up and voice your opinion or ideas or...
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, close public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, council's pleasure.
Make a motion to consider adoption of Resolution 2018-05 to implement the drought reserve rate for the utility fund.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. And it takes us to item nine, which is new business. Item A is consider approval of Resolution Number 2018-03 regarding new hourly pay scale for city employees. Staff report please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. What you have before you is a couple items to make sure that we're in line with the new state minimum wage that became effective on January 1st, 2018. There were three positions that were below the new minimum wage, which is the $11 an hour. That is the Recreation Leader Aid, the Special Assistant Range, and the Habitat Restoration Aid. Staff is recommending that we approve the adoption of the new rates, so that the minimum for those positions is at $11 an hour. The other item that's listed is also in terms of creating a range for our internship position. Currently, our pay rate for interns that we hire during the summer is one set rate of $15 per hour. We've been finding over the past couple of years that even with the internships, it's become competitive, and we're recommending creating a range of $15 to $20 per hour to allow us some flexibility in attracting recruiting students that have higher education and experience levels to help us out with our projects during the summer. There are two resolutions, one is approving the new rates, and the second resolution... There are two resolutions, one is approving the new rates, and the second resolution is updating the master pay schedule per the requirements for CalPERS. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions on this? Council questions? So we do, that actually covers both items A and B. So, council questions?
Nope.
I haven't, I don't have any questions.
Not seeing any? Okay. Not really a public hearing, so anybody wish to speak on this? Okay.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-03 and 2018-04 to update the hourly pay scale and the master pay schedule.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and second on both resolutions. Any further council discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to staff reports, city managers' report on upcoming activities. Are we ready to take a break? No.
You really want to drink, don't you?
I'll try to make this quick, there are a number of things to just update you on or report out to the community. This Saturday, there's a couple of events. One is the volunteer planting day at Castanos Canyon that will start at 10:00 a.m. Lunch is provided also. We also have the artist evening of sharing at Mission Blue, which starts at 7:30 p.m. There's no admission fee, and all ages are welcome for that event. On February 14th at 10:00 a.m. over at the shopping center, we will be having the ribbon cutting for the city's new EV charger. Councilmember Lentz will continue to have office hours. Have one scheduled for you on February 14th, I don't know if you want to do it that night or not, but we'll, we can talk.
Valentine's?
Yeah. Might...
Hey, my honey's in...
Yeah. You may get a rough crowd that shows up.
Cablegram.
Yeah, there you go.
So just a note to the council and the public, that the police department has been submitting an article every month for publishing in Star. This month deals with the law concerning recreational marijuana, for those who want to be up to date on that. Our next Baylands meeting is scheduled for March 3rd.
March 1st.
Excuse me, March 1st. I'll be gone by March 3rd. March 1st, which is a Thursday, and we have some information that we recently posted on our website on an article from the mayor and a letter to the editor of the Chronicle that might be of interest to people. And the annual school districts fundraiser, Spring Thing, Hot Havana's Night is scheduled for April 28th. Location to be determined.
Okay, and also Congresswoman Spear is having a meeting this?
Well, that's not a general public meeting, that's a, that's a meeting for... I'll be attending, I don't know who else from the council's signed up.
Is the progress seminar?
No, this is on Saturday at 3:00 to 4:30 at the Chiketti Room in Millbury.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
I'm going.
You're gonna go?
Yeah, if you want to go and you haven't...
But I would go.
Yeah.
I'll give...
If you want, I can send in an RSVP for you. If you...
I've RSVP'd.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll attend, and I think...
What date is that?
Saturday.
That's Saturday at 3 o'clock.
You ain't gonna be here.
You're not gonna be here.
I'll try and take some good notes for you, Terry.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, and if there's anything that you want Clay or Karen to ask Congresswoman Spear specifically, maybe send him an email, huh?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Works.
Okay, very good, thank you, Clay. Comes to Mayor, City Council matters. Item A is budget workshop for two-year budget. And we do have a proposed date now, just to let you know, I may not be here that day, but I may be, so. Either way, we'll schedule it no matter what. Okay? So the proposed single-day overview, budget overdue workshop is for June 9th. Does anybody have any issues with that other than me?
What, what day of the week is that?
It's a weekend, right?
It's a Saturday.
Saturday.
I'll pencil it in.
We're, maybe concern's not the right word, but we're kind of planning for some potential meetings in June relative to the various issues you're dealing with on the Baylands, and so we're trying to keep that calendar as clear as we can, and that was the reason that we are suggesting this approach with the budget this year.
Okay. And this budget workshop, for folks who are watching, it is open to the public, so not a closed budget workshop.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, several months ago, we talked about various capital improvement projects. So where does that fit in with our council's schedule? And then we have the goal-setting workshop, and then we have the budget workshop. It could be either.
You, the council requested that we bring back a number of the projects that you had identified that you would want to consider for funding now, but you wanted to do it in the context of the mid-year budget. So I think we are looking at May 15th, or May 15th, March 15th is the date?
At the moment, we're looking at March 15th.
March 15th.
Do you want to move it back to May 15th, Clay?
That's getting pretty close to the end of the year.
More time, more time the better for me.
So, but when we have our goal-setting session at the end of the month, we will kind of just remind you of all those items that you put on the list so that that's fresh in everybody's mind, and unless directed otherwise, we would be ready to talk about those in the context of a decision to fund when you have your mid-year budget review.
That's the same meeting we're having with the library also, right? That day?
Right now, the library, to put the library out to bid is scheduled for May 15th. March 15th.
Okay.
I'm moving ahead of...
Got it. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? No, I was asking council if any other questions. Okay, item B, which is city council meeting schedule and scheduling interviews for city commission and committee appointees. We got quite a list here, okay.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Let's go over city council meeting schedule first. Oh, we might have to add commission meetings into that. So Ingrid, I guess we should probably look at scheduling the interviews before we go over the city council meeting schedule.
Yeah, so we sent out a doodle poll earlier today, and it looks like March 6th and March 8th are the only possible dates.
March what?
March 6th or March 8th.
I did not bring a calendar, what days of the week are those?
So, March 6th is a Tuesday, and March 8th is a Thursday.
You know, I got a new phone, I brought my old one. All right, I'll, I'll look.
And we, we think we can get through those in one evening's schedule?
Absolutely not.
Since there were 27 applications that were received, I believe we'll need at least two evenings, perhaps one day specifically just for the planning commission applications, and the second day for the rest of the other commissions and committee.
Yeah.
So we'll need both dates, right?
Let's see what...
What were those dates again?
March 6th and 8th.
6th and 8th, okay.
Tuesday, Thursday.
Just see if I can get in there.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we gotta split it to two days. That's 27, 27 people we're gonna be like... I mean, there may be...
That would be seven hours of interview alone, if each person got 15 minutes.
So March 8th is a CCAG meeting? So I've already missed one of those.
How about March 7th, I believe, is one of your office hours date?
Yeah, no, I could, I could swap that out. No, actually, it's the 2nd and 4th. That's the first Wednesday of the month, so I'm available on the 7th as well.
Okay, let me take a look at the room schedule, but it should work. Does March 7th work for everybody else too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we'd be doing it on a Wednesday and a Thursday, so back-to-back meetings?
Tuesday and Wednesday.
Tuesday and Wednesday?
I thought he said the 7th.
7th is Wednesday, Thursday is CCAG on the 8th.
Oh, so, but it'd still be back-to-back meetings on the 6th and the 7th?
Yeah.
So we're doing 6th and 7th, not 7th and 8th?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not available the 7th. Sorry. Is somebody not available the 8th? Or what?
I, I'm not, I have...
You're not? How about the following Tuesday, the 13th?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Terry, we'd be doing two meetings a week.
Two meetings a week isn't the problem, it's back-to-back-to-back meetings, so, so now we're looking at the 6th and the 13th?
Yeah.
Yes.
And starting at what time?
6:30 was the proposed time. Does that work?
6:30, okay. All right, 6th and 13th then of March.
Okay.
I don't see anything else. Yeah.
And would you like to...
Do you have any subcommittee meetings scheduled during that week of March 12th?
I don't think we have anything, let me look real quick, I don't think we're that far out. Let me just...
Would you prefer to interview planning commission applicants first, on the 6th?
I would.
Versus...
Yeah, I, I think so, wouldn't you think?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any subcommittee meetings that, either of those weeks.
Okay. Okay. So I think we got that covered, and now let's look at the city mount, city, city mounsel.
We're all jacked up tonight, I mean...
City council meeting schedule, I'm trying to... City council...
What is in that water?
Meeting schedule, it's just...
I don't think we have any in March.
Got them all untied.
City council meeting scheduled, is there anything on here that... Now, if I don't do this in June, I'm definitely gonna be gone in August, so...
Yes, are we not planning to do a break this year? Last year, we did not get a break.
We, we, just haven't scheduled the summer yet, usually, you know, later in the spring when we have a sense of what may not be coming your way. The only thing I could think of that was, will cause a problem is obviously the Baylands. Other than that, I'm sure we should be...
Would have caused a problem last year.
Yeah, yeah, it may cause a problem for some number of years to come, but... I don't know, we'll, we'll definitely try to work around a couple of meetings during this summer, so that your, the schedule's a little lighter. I mean, July, July 5th, unless for some reason we have to meet, I think we would probably cancel.
Oh, yeah, come on, boy.
Fourth, yeah. Yeah, what is that?
Okay. No more questions, let's move on to item C, which is county-wide assignments and subcommittee reports, and we'll start with you, Cliff.
Sure. Let's see, so I had a heartboard meeting, and I just gave them an update of what we decided to do as a council, moving forward with the fiscal analysis, and they were, of course, happy that we were doing something. I had a CCAG transportation plan meeting, so we have a little ad hoc committee that's looking at applying these performance indicators and an implementation plan for the CCAG transportation plan. You would think that there would be one in it, but there's not. We are using, or they're using our sustainability framework as one of the documents to put those indicators and implementation guidelines into the plant, so that, that was kind of cool. So that, those are the only county, yeah?
Is that, is that weird?
Well, I think, you know, our city, as far as I know, is the only document that they're using to look at different examples. Of course, they're gonna use the MTC 2040 plan, community.org's transportation goals, and Samtrans, and Caltrains. But as far as the city, yeah, we're the only one.
Any other subcommittee reports?
I don't think so.
Karen?
Oh, yeah, that's right, we had a housing one, so...
Oh, we had Park and Rec.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, so...
Festival.
We had, yes, our city music festival update, and we had Jimmy come in and Michael, those are the two guys that, that helped put on the, the event, and they're pretty excited about coming back and, and making it an annual gig. So they, they have some cool folks that they think can headline the, the show. We talked about ways to, you know, get the community more involved with the event, you know, especially someone like the Lions, you know, with the food. So, yeah, and, oh, and we're thinking about moving the date to August, August 8th, 18th? That's right, August 18th. So we had it July 8th last year, I believe, so moving it later and, and having it be kind of like a kickoff to Concerts in the Park, Stuart?
No, it would be the end.
At the end, okay.
Finale.
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 We also, we looked at how much was brought in, and we were pretty pleased. I think we made something like 12,000, 13,000?
We spent about 30,000, and we brought in about 12,000 to 13,000.
So we were actually really pleasantly surprised for the first year how much was, I think that was like more than we expected. And so we were also trying to think of like more creative ways in which we could raise money for our beneficiary, which would be Mountain Watch. So, and then also tried to, we were talking about, originally, there was the race that was gonna go along with the, the festival, and so we're still trying to figure out a way where we can make that happen this year. So I think we're, we have some stuff in the works, and I think that now we've kind of worked out the kinks and know what works, what doesn't, and the adjustments that we need to make for next year, and I think the community kind of has like a better understanding of what to expect. So I think this, this year's event will be really great.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else?
We did have a housing committee.
Did we?
Yeah.
I've had so many, I've had like...
Yeah, no, we, we did, we, in, in, I believe we did.
You, you gave approval for us to work with the architect to come back with some...
Yeah.
Oh, right.
For the teen center site?
Yeah, I thought we had, I wasn't sure if we had mentioned that to the council at our last council meeting or not, but yeah, I don't think that we did. So yeah, we did, we had a housing subcommittee meeting. There's this guy who works with Heart. He is someone who quite involved with, with affordable housing developers, so trying to come up with a couple of plans, there's like two, two renditions.
Yeah, and, and I probably misstated, I didn't word that quite right. What, what basically is like, it's a capacity analysis, so it's not architectural drawings on what it might look like, it's more of what the site can carry in terms of number of units and size of units and the, things of that nature, so that we could, the next step after that would be to do an economic feasibility of, of that and, and then go from there.
Yeah, you know, and our site is small, so, you know, probably could, you know, really only generate about 12 or 13 units. And as we know, a lot of the affordable housing developers, they want something that's at least 40, but, you know, we do own the property, there's, you know, potential. But yeah, once we get this information from him, then we can do the economic analysis.
Okay. Are you good, Karen?
We had a technology subcommittee meeting, and I didn't want to agree to what was put forward, so I asked for 24 hours to do some study and sent some information to Clay, which he is now working on. I wasn't happy with where things were sitting.
All right.
But you want to save what we've talked about?
Go ahead.
Oh, you can do it, you want me to do it?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
So, so basically, this is about our website and doing upgrades to the website, upgrading the technology that's running the website versus a long-term goal of potentially putting a lot of money into designing a new website, which I don't think would be a good idea. But even the minor fixes that need to be done, I had some questions about why we were spending the money. You know, when we have somebody who's taking care of our website, they have a fee for taking care of it, which in most cases includes software upgrades, which have not happened, so we're looking at a whole bunch of those things as to, you know, why we're gonna spend this extra money, if at all.
Okay.
Is that fair, Clay, you want to say anything else?
I don't want to say too much more because we're doing the assessment, but I think that's a fair characterization.
Anything else, Karen, outside of Brisbane, anything?
We went to the League of Council California Cities-
Oh, yeah, that was, that was really fascinating. I got food poisoning and came back and was sick for five days from the hiatus.
Oh, my gosh.
So that was fun, but-
I went up there one time, one year, and got sick the first day and spent the-
The rest of the time in bed?
Yeah, I had a flu, it was like-
I waited till I got back to get-
I got well enough to drive back barely.
I got sick on my birthday, so that was huge fun. So, I, the biggest takeaway from that for me is the finance presentation, although it was probably fascinating for people who like numbers, was one of the most boring presentations I've ever sat through in my life, but then I'm not, I'm not a numbers person, I don't like it too much.
You gotta give finance people love, though.
I know, I know, you know, the people who were giving the presentation were extremely passionate, and they obviously loved what they were talking about, the rest of us in the room, not so much.
Oh, just wait for my budget presentation, I put everyone to sleep.
Please don't.
I need memes, I need videos, I need sound effects.
You need like smoke and-
Yeah, lasers.
I'm very pleased there are people who love numbers, but the, I think the best-
Smoking mirrors for our budget presentation. I just wanted to know.
All right, I take that back then, sorry.
But I think the best presentation, and I think something that we should all look at over and over again was the ethics and legal training. I thought that was mind-boggling, and there were a few things that came up in that presentation, and I'm having light bulbs go off over my head, and I got to have a half-hour consultation with a pretty, pretty high-up mucky-muck attorney up there who was part of the presentation, and at some point, I will be sharing that with you.
Okay, very good, thank you, Karen, Madison.
Okay.
I know you're feeling a little under the weather, but-
Yeah, we'll try and, we'll try and get them all in here. So I had my first PCE meeting, Peninsula Clean Energy, and I don't know what the heck is going on, so I'm just trying to catch up. They got all, they love to use, they love to use like acronyms, and I don't know what any of the, I mean, it's all acronyms. They must have 15 different acronyms, with like no, everyone in the room knows what it is, but so I'm just trying to like kind of catch up and understand like all of what's going on, so it's gonna take me a little bit. But what I thought was really interesting was they gave the report back about all of these studies that they put out, questionnaires, regarding awareness of Peninsula Clean Energy, and like, basically, nobody knows that it exists. And when people think about buying their energy, they just think about PG&E, obviously. And so there was this really big like discussion amongst the board, which I thought was so fascinating, about like staff wanted, wanted to spend more marketing dollars, bring awareness that Peninsula Clean Energy exists and it's out there, and this is who you're buying your, your energy from, and the board members kind of challenged that, saying, well, we have like 97% of market share, kind of in the best, we're in the best spot, like, you know, you don't necessarily want to make them aware, and then like you're just, you could potentially lose their business. You have, those 3%, you're just never gonna convert anyway, and that, like, the 3% of the market share you don't have, and so what is the point of spending all of this, all of this money trying to like create awareness so we can be spending that money on projects that really benefit-
That 3% opted out.
Right, and so they're talking about like trying to figure out a way to, yeah, to target those people, target, yeah, target those people who are like are on the verge, who may opt out, who are on those like high-risk populations of seniors who like potentially could opt out, and so we don't, but now we're telling them about it, and we're probably increasing the likelihood that they're gonna opt out. So it was really interesting to have like staff had a totally different perspective of like how we should be marketing, and then, and then the board members felt totally different. And so there was this interesting back and forth that happened, and like it was a council member from San Carlos threw this out, and then everyone kind of chewed on it for a while, and then we all started, it was just a very interesting conversation. And so, just me as a first, first-time person, I was just soaking it all in, so.
Yeah, well, welcome to county politics.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was, it was interesting, but it's definitely gonna take me a while to kind of, it's like another language for me, so I am gonna have to decipher that.
It's okay to ask, too, to stop using acronyms, or at least give you a list.
Yeah.
Because it might be other people in the room who really don't understand.
And everyone who's on that board is like super passionate, like they're all, the way Lori felt about Peninsula Clean Energy, like that she was very passionate about sitting on that board, and everyone else who's on, on it, it like embodies that same sort of passion. So, very quickly, I'm sure I'll figure out where that stems from. So, we, I also had a history subcommittee meeting with Clark, and we met with the new history, like Historical Society, members of the Histor-, we have a great turnout of people that are on that, and they came forward with a list of projects that they'd like to work on, and just building policy for, you know, how we accept donations and, and things like that. And also wanted, they made it very clear to us that, you know, at the end of the day, the council is always, it's always at the pleasure of the council, and, you know, if they get something that's donated, they'll always run it by us to make sure, you know, it's something that the council would like to, would like to take into our collection of historical artifacts, and they feel like we have a really great working relationship, and they just talked about different projects and things like, you know, interviewing people that hold a lot of these oral history, like Dolores, and so, do you have anything to add, Clark, to that?
It's a pretty comprehensive list of things that they wanted to bring forth, and we were impressed.
They had done a lot of work, they created a mission statement, I mean, it was-
We added a few things to it.
Yeah. It was great. Terry and I had an airport noise subcommittee meeting. I'm gonna be filling in for Terry at the next roundtable meeting, so it would be helpful for staff-
More acronyms.
To like, I know, to just kind of get me, I'm just like, I'll be getting the agenda and everything, so if there's anything that I need to say, you'll let me know. But at this point, I, I don't think I'm gonna be saying anything, I'm just gonna be-
Just note on the expansion if uh-
Right, right, of course. So, do you have anything to add to that one?
No, I think it was a very productive meeting where we are looking at other avenues of, you know, abatement or legal possibilities, and working with the City of Pacifica, having our staff city attorney talk to their city attorney and see if we have common ground to work with any other jurisdictions, but that's all in the works, and, you know, so.
Like a League of California Cities?
I think it's more limited than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think-
Say something about-
Yeah.
So, I have Flight Tracker and a couple of other radar things on my phone. So, when I'm rudely awoken, sometimes now as early as 4:45, I can click it and know the flight number of the aircraft, that where they're going, et cetera. And we'd had a problem several years ago with a cargo outfit out of, where are they from, New Orleans?
Is that the Kitka or Ki-
Kalida.
Yeah.
Memphis, they're out of Memphis. So, you tell me why a fully laden, very, very old 747 cargo plane needs to take off on that north-south runway and fly directly over Brisbane to go to Memphis. But the good thing about that nightmare that was going on for about a week, and it woke up, I think, just about everybody in town, was that one phone call and it ended. So, we can still make those phone calls with data and have something changed. I sent the information to Clay, and I guess one phone call to Burton, that situation was over. So we, small mercies, right, we got one airline off our tail again. Thank you.
That's great.
The one thing to note about the Flight Tracker and a lot of the other things that's come to our attention and the subcommittee's attention is that while, when it's a very specific flight that's going overhead, often the airport is sort of, I won't say denying that the flight information that you're getting when you push the button is correct, but it's in a five-second delay at least, and so there is some discrepancy on how accurate some of those things are, especially when you get multiple planes in the air. So that's just something to keep in mind, that, you know, what the app is reporting to a certain degree isn't always the exact where they were in perspective when you hit the button, but where they were five seconds before, or five seconds after, and elevations. So there is some issues with that, but, no, reporting is a really important thing to do, and having citizens doing the reporting, whether it's through the noise hotline or on one of the apps, is, is also important.
Yeah, that's why I actually have several trackers on my phone, I hit them all at the same time. Sorry, kind of gets in my craw, too, so, so we can, we can argue that one when people say, hey, well, you know, this is not what it was. Well, I've got three trackers that say it was, so, it's just another piece of-
Well, we are working on having another set of noise monitors, we're looking at different locations because the school was too noisy, so they're gonna modify where the location of the-
Should be on top of my house.
Everybody thinks that way.
So stuffy thought.
But, so we are, we are getting some, at least response from SFO as far as meeting some of the community needs of tracking and noise monitoring and quarterly reports, so that's a good thing, and we're working on how that data is going to be presented to us, and, and what it is actually going to mean to us on the ground.
Thank you.
So those are all abided?
Okay.
I think, unless I-
I'll jump into mine. I had two infrastructure meetings with Clark. One was based on the library construction plans, and that's gonna be coming back to the council, I believe, on the March 15th meeting. We were just updated on the library and the, where they're at with the architectural drawings and the construction scheduling. We also had a meeting with UPC regarding the soils processing operations, and one of the big things that we had was concerns over compliance and their air quality oversight. So we asked for them to give us an update on what that would mean. Basically, they think it means, well, they're tasking with, with more water trucks to have better dust control. And then staff also, we asked for them to respond with the quantity of soils that are there, and to quantify it for us to a better degree, and then they're gonna be coming back to us with more information at our next meeting. We, I also went to my first local policymakers group for the Caltrain system. It was my first meeting, so, of course, they, it was very nice, they did a oversight of Caltrain and what their program is for the new policymakers on the group. A couple of the things that came up was talking about the blended system, and I had a couple of questions about their maintenance facility in San Jose, and whether it was adequate for Caltrains as it sits and with electrification. They feel, the, the short answer was they feel that the San Jose maintenance facility is enough until, for about 75% of capacity at a blended system. But they don't think it's going to be enough maintenance facility and storage yard when it really comes down to it and they get to capacity. I also asked about the San, they talked a lot about the ownership of the Caltrain line, and how it went from a public to a private, to a semi-public operation, and that not everything is owned by Caltrain, some of it's right-of-way, some of the stations are individually owned by cities, some of the stations are owned by the system, some are privately owned and leased back to the system. And my big question was the Fourth and Townsend Station, and it turns out that that is not an owned station, it is owned by Prologis, actually, who has property here along the Caltrain tracks, the old Van Waters Rogers property, and I asked if they were in negotiations on, or if there'd been negotiations happening with, with abandoning that as a Caltrain yard. And they said that there was talk, quote-unquote, of getting rid of that station, but it hadn't proceeded more than chatter. But it would be, it is a possibility that that would change use. So, it was interesting to me to get some of the background, and I look forward to seeing more, but it was actually, while an advisory board, it did actually give me a lot of information, so I was glad I was able to attend that.
I thought you were on that.
The only ones that we had.
We switched?
Immediately, every meeting was canceled while I was there.
We switched, I was PCE and she had the local policymaker group, and we, we decided to switch when we did the reorganization, and so.
So you can't do both on the same day?
Because they're-
Yeah, no, this is true, all right. Who gave you that, that feedback on, on what's happening in San Francisco, was that Jillian?
I can't recall the gentleman's name who gave the report, I did get an extra copy of the basic report. That wasn't something that was in the written materials, it was a question I asked following up when they were talking about ownership of the line.
All right, yeah, I didn't know that Prologis owned the station, and so I guess they own the rail yard as well. I mean, because San Francisco has done a study, haven't they, in regards to looking at other locations, including moving that rail yard to Brisbane?
Yeah, it, it's been more than just chatter, I mean, they, they did do, they, they do, did do a study that I would characterize as still in progress. Like many of the studies out of San Francisco, there's fits and starts to them, so we haven't heard anything for quite some time about the status of that, but there were, I think, the mayor's office in San Francisco, at one point anyway, was pushing to try to- was pushing to try to uh redevelop that site and to move a train yard um out of um, out of San Francisco. Uh, they were looking at Brisbane at one, one point in time. Um, but that is just kind of, um, again, like many studies out of San Francisco, they just come, come to a certain point and then they just kinda seem to stop. Um, obviously with the upheaval in the city in terms of the, the mayor's position. I wouldn't anticipate anything, you know, for some time, but when the new mayor's in there, we may see um a renewed push in that. Um, I do know that Caltrain, at least up until this point, has been resistant to that idea.
They did indicate that.
Yeah, they, they uh wanna keep a, a terminus uh yard there. Um, so that's a, that's another issue.
The other thing that came up was that um with the high-speed rail um and Caltrain having um issues over the same track and, and scheduling, you know, to be part of the system, if and when high-speed rail um comes this far, it, it sounded as if, it sounds more that they may end high-speed rail, or that there's a conversation of ending it in San Jose and turning the trains around there. Um, that met with a lot of backlash from the community because I guess their Durden Station, which is their terminus for a lot of their light rail and Caltrain, is backing up. And the reason that they're not being able to run more trains through there is that it's a big bottleneck. And they feel that if high-speed rail terminus is there, that it would cause more of a congestion problem for all of the peninsula um with the trains. And they certainly felt that there might be a need for another location.
Okay. So um, everybody reported everything. I had anything else, Terry? Uh, maybe, maybe you can get a copy of that uh overhead that you got and give it to Ingrid in the.
I have it in my, I have an extra copy in my car. I will get it to her.
Maybe we can make copies for us, huh?
Yeah.
One question. Uh, did you say that all the stations are owned differently as well as the tracks?
The track is, um, yes. They all have, many have different, I, I, some are owned by Caltrain. Some are owned by individual cities. It's a very mixed hodgepodge of who owns what.
That seems.
And so, anything that happens, uh, it's mostly the historical stations that are owned by cities. Um, so there was a, a lot of talk about grade separation and how they could do that and fund it. Um, that comes down to an individual community to find the funding for grade separation.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Um, I think we're the only community with, that doesn't have uh that issue.
We're the only community with a four-track alignment system.
Yes, and, and, and no at-grade crossings. So um it, it was interesting to hear how other cities really want the focus of the um policymaker group to be addressing the at-grade crossings and how they're gonna fund that. Because that's a huge issue for these communities.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And wasn't one for me because we didn't have that problem.
You have the rail yard issue, they have the uh, the grade separation issue, yeah. Yeah, crossings, yeah.
Just to add to the uh, um, our meeting with UPC, uh, we told them that uh they can do as much export operation as they want.
Yeah.
But it's, the import is still basically shut down and there's no recommendation at this time, so.
Ju- just to clarify that, they do have to come in on an independent basis anytime they wanna export and get a, a permit to do that.
Right.
So it's not a blanket approval.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
They know we're in favor of reduction.
Uh, you know, one last thing, Clark. Um, you know, uh, so I ha- I've had two office hours and, and most of the discussion has been non-baylands, just things, you know, in town. So um, we have a, a list of the things that have been discussed and, and feedback that I've asked staff, um, and also feedback that I've uh been able to provide. So um Clay is gonna send that to all the council members so that you're abreast of what's happening in the office hours.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. And then Cliff and I attended the Council of Cities Dinner this past Friday night down in uh Redwood City. And that was a presentation of what we already saw in regards to the um, they're looking for the support of the transportation tax that they wanted to do for the county, the half-cent sales tax. So there's kind of a mixed bag there. And we will be hosting Council of Cities on February 23rd at Byright. And we have two speakers on the agenda, right? We have Bill Barilich of Byright and also uh um Mark Church uh of the uh County Voter Registration Office.
The Mark Church.
Is gonna talk about uh the elections in June.
All right.
That's it. Anybody else have anything?
You know, I, I won't be attending the Council of Cities Dinner in Brisbane. Yeah, my daughter has a gymnastics mate.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm bummed, but uh.
I'll let everybody know.
Thank you.
Reason Cliff's not here. Okay, um, item D, which I added on here is the discussion of adding an ad hoc committee to study feasibility of becoming a charter city. Um, you know, we do have um quite a few charter cities in California and we actually have some in Samatail County. So uh, I think uh Redwood City's a charter city, Samatail's a charter city, and I'm not sure if there's any, anybody else. That's it. And, you know, Michael and I have had a discussion regarding this, you know, the, the, maybe the pros and cons, you know? Uh, cities do have more uh uh land use powers as a charter city. Uh, so there, I mean, there's pros and cons, so, you know, there's different ways of looking at if you wanna do a charter. Michael, if you'd be so kind of, uh, if you're not prepared for it, I think, I think our discussion was that you could, that people could elect a body that would define a charter and then that would go to an election, or a, a city council subcommittee can investigate it and develop a charter, get approval from the council, then put it on the ballot, right?
That's, going from memory, that's, that's the two, the two advocates.
Right. And so uh um, I know we kinda had a brief discussion about this, but uh I'd like to explore it further and.
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah, and I'd like to be on that ad hoc committee, you know, to, to push it, uh, to see where it goes. It may, may come to nothing, but it may come to something. And if uh, if something that uh the council wants to entertain and put it on the ballot, you know, I suggest that maybe we kinda shoot for November, November ballot. That's a possibility. So i- is this something we could do tonight, make an ad hoc committee or, since I put it on the agenda, or do I have to bring it back?
If you wanna create the, I'm all you're doing is creating the ad hoc committee and if there's support to do that, then we'll go ahead and get the meeting set up.
Okay, so is the council willing to allow me to serve as one person and who else wants to uh join me?
I'd be interested in doing it.
Okay, all right, very good. All right. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
So Terry and I?
That was easy.
We don't need a motion for that, right? Okay, all right. Very good. Uh, that brings us to item E, which is written communications. And we've only had three. Um, had the massage therapy council dated uh December 13th, 17. We've had two from uh Camelia Vladimirova on, one on January 16th, one on January 17th, and we had one from Tony Varios on uh January 29th. And that's it. So that brings us to oral communications, number two. We have one taker. Barbara.
Um, yeah, I just had a couple of questions, things I wanted to follow up with. I think it was two or three council meetings ago. Uh, Terry mentioned the Airport Noise Committee. They were planning on reorganizing something where they just counted number of reporters rather than number of reports per, per district. And I was just wondering if they had moved forward with that, um, because that was very concerning to us because we're so small, that would really weight against us. Um, with the baylands and the soils processing, I know a lot of citizens have been interested in a long time in seeing those manifests and seeing where soil's coming from. So I wanted to ask the city council to make those available to the citizens again. This is, I think, my third time asking for this and I'm hoping that you guys will be able to make that happen for us someday. And um, there was one other minor issue, but I'm gonna let it go. That was it. Thanks.
Thanks, Barbara.
So i- if I can follow up, on the airport noise, it is mostly that the way the report is formatted, that is given to the Airport Noise Committee on how they are reporting the data. And it doesn't really change the amount of people who are reporting, but they feel that people who are hitting the button 300 times in a day don't carry as much weight as how many people are actually reporting. And that was something with the larger communities, that they felt that the number of single reporters um were, was a better data than the reporters who were making 300 complaints per day or per hour. And so it's more a matter of the format of the report that goes, not the raw material of the report. So it, but it is something that we, we still would appreciate, I would appreciate as a council member, having the more people in the city overall who report is, shows a better idea of who is impacted by the noise. So that was the big thing on the noise report. Um, so.
Uh, I had a follow-up on the manifest. I've, you and I.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
Okay.
You and I had an email exchange or telephone exchange a while ago regarding that. I had asked for something similar and I can't recall what became of that. Can you refresh my memory? Cause that was something I was interested in getting information on, too.
Well, I'm afraid I'm not gonna be able to refresh your memory, other than I had, recall us talking about it also.
Oh, no.
Let, let me do this, let me.
I think you said there was no, there wasn't really like a manifest.
Yeah.
There was more like, and like we could do an audit.
Yeah, we, we.
That's what I recall that you said.
Right, we, we don't get um.
Like you, we can't require like a law, like we, there was no way for us to pull, from what I remember, a log of like.
Right.
What, all of, where all the soils have come from and such, so, but we could request basically an audit at a specific time.
Yeah, if we, if we felt that there was a, an issue there. Um, I mean, we get um reports on volumes and um in the, in, you know, previously truck loads because that's how we set the fee and um we get that sort of data. The, the manifests, um, the so-called manifests, I mean, are kept by the operator because they have to be able to know where their material is coming from, when it's tested, and um, you know, what their test results are because they're trying to sell it out to the, the open market. So they, they've got a business and necessity to do that. But what, let me do this, let me sit down with staff and with the city attorney and see what it is under the um, our current arrangement that we can request. Um, and uh, you know, I'm certainly, from our perspective, we don't have any problem with having as much transparency on it as, as we can provide.
The, the one thing that I will say that um came up in our meeting with UPC, um, and I know that the public's concern was with the soil that was um removed from Hunter's Point that had questionable um origins or testing. And we were told that no soils came from that facility.
That, that, that's correct. And, and of course, that, you know, it, we also had the discussion that, you know, I, I realized that people want us to, to basically make a like-it statement to that effect, but we're not running the business. But we can tell people what we are told and what we are um, um, providing information on, that there has been no materials from that project, from the Hunter's Point Naval Shipyards project onto the Bayland site. And I have no reason to believe that that's not accurate information.
Right.
Anything else?
Make a motion to close the meeting?
In memory.
My favorite. Aye.
Wait, are we closing in memory?
Meeting adjourned.
Okay.
Pete Mizetti.
Huh? Oh.
She is.
In memory of.
Oh.
Adjourned in memory of Pete Mizetti.
There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I've known Pete for a long time.